I'll go over to our beat.
Yeah, I think we just looked at it to keep it proper.
We got 10 seconds.
Sure.
Good evening, I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order if you please stand for invocation and pledge.
Pray with me. Our dear gracious heavenly Father, we come to you tonight with Thanksgiving in our hearts and praise on our lips for this city that we live in, that we love and that we care for. And the privilege that we have to do the business of the city tonight, we thank you for that. We ask that you would be watch over everyone that is here and those that may be coming through this way. And we ask for those who are sick in body tonight with COVID that you would watch over them and others who have other ailments that you would touch their body and that you would heal them in a mighty way. Be with us now as we do the business of the city. Give us wisdom and knowledge of things that we need to know and go before us and that what is said here tonight will be pleasing in your sight. And it's in your holy name we ask, amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Drake, roll please.
Kerry Hyde, Ward 1, here. Jay Step, Ward 2.
Here.
Kerry Roth, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward 5.
Here.
Taff Rinn, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you, Julia. First order of business is the approval of our council meeting from October the 1st. And council, you've had an opportunity to review the minutes and now be an opportunity to make any corrections to that or if there are none, a motion would be in order. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Reed, get us started this morning. We have an appointee to the DDA Board.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item before you is the reappointment of one of our existing board members to fill the term that he would like to remain on the DDA Board for. And staff recommends your approval.
Who is that person?
Sorry, my apologies, Dan Kramer. He is currently our sitting Board Chair.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Porter, you have the next couple, please, sir.
Yes, Mayor. The first one is FiberCom Department. This ordinance is a second reading and if approved would officially create the FiberCom Department and it's recommended for your approval.
Any discussion on this item? If there's none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
Yes, sir. The next item is the FiberCom Director with the approval establishment of the FiberCom Department. At some point in the future, like to appoint a director for that position. This ordinance will allow that to happen. I recommend this for approval as well.
Questions for Dan on this item? And if there are none, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Lovell, you have the next item.
Yes, Mayor. As y'all recall, back in January of this year, the Development Authority recommended a bond issuance for Anheuser-Busch's new project in the amount of $80 million. Since then, Anheuser has come to us and said they wish to increase the investment in our community to $150 million. This is an amendment to that bond resolution and the attached memorandum of understanding. The Development Authority did approve this on Tuesday and is scheduled for the Commissioner's approval on next Wednesday as well.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you to Anheuser-Busch. Any discussion? If there's none, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Gillum, next item, please, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Coming to you with a bridge repair on the Pettit Creek Trail. Due to an accident that happened a few weeks ago, the bridge at Pettit Creek Trail off of Casco Road and Goodyear Avenue was heavily damaged along with the guardrail and the historical marker. We went out and received four quotes for this project. Redtop Industrial was chosen as the contractor. The total cost of the bridge repair will be $77,661.16 and this does include engineer services. The pictures of the trailer up on the screen that you can see the damage that was done. The insurance company, the person that damaged the bridge will be the one that's paying for the project. Initially, the city will pay the down payment that's required from Redtop and then we'll get reimbursed from that on the end. So we ask approval for Redtop to do this project.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Tom on this item?
Will that bridge get totally resurfaced?
Yes, sir.
That'll be great.
And that's why we went with them because they have the engineering services so they have a structural engineer that will help with the new bridge that'll be put in place.
Just for clarity, I mean, they're gonna fix the part now. They'll go back some from the damage but they're not gonna replace every board from the beginning. It's just the main structure what the insurance will pay for, it's not every single piece. But for the most part, it's pretty heavily damaged.
I'm sure there's some boards on there that have been damaged.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, a motion is in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you, Tom. Mr. Wilson, you have the next few.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. The first item is the first reading of the model ordinance for stormwater. Georgia EPD requires us to update our stormwater ordinances by December 6th of this year. And because we are a municipal separate storm sewer system, which is an MS4 Phase 2, and Georgia, the Metropolitan North Georgia Water Planning District, which we are a member of, has also this requirement. They have provided us with this model ordinance. And it has been a long review through the district over at least three years or more and seven versions and through technical committees and public comment. And we have, we are presenting this model ordinance this evening with a few edits that accommodate our requirements.
Wade, you had mentioned in work session, I guess really what this is, the EPD is telling us what we've gotta put in our ordinances. I'll say that, you don't have to. But as part of that, there are certain provisions in here that you mentioned during work session that may actually encourage or make it easier to develop some properties.
That is correct. The big driver for EPD was we address runoff reduction in stormwater. And that is basically, to sum it up, is just water infiltrating into the ground to do that with the first storms. And so we have challenges in our geologic area with clay soils as well as karst terrain, which causes sinkholes, and sometimes this isn't a good idea. And so there are options in the policy for runoff reduction in feasibility that will allow developers or engineers to apply for exemption if they meet those requirements. And so that runoff reduction part may be exempted on probably a lot of the projects within our area. Ninety, 95% of the city is in Ridge and Valley Province, which would tend to lead to that type of geology.
Thank you. This is the first reading, there's no vote. Are there any other questions for Wade on this particular item at this time?
Mayor, just to remind y'all that this will go in effect on December 6th. Until then, the current rules will remain in place.
Thank you. Mr. Lovell. Mr. Wilson.
All right. The next one is the guardrail on North Irwin Street was hit recently. It was damaged. The insurance claim has been filed, so we expect reimbursement from Allstate. The repair is estimated to be $5,697 by Martin Robbins Fence Company and we recommend approval.
Thank you. Any questions on this item? And if there are none, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next item, Wade.
All right. Next item, also damaged through a wreck on 113. One of our corrections crew trailers was hit and it totaled one of our mowers. This is a replacement. A replacement mower was with Taylor Outdoor Power and Equipment. It's called Turf Tracer S 48-inch mower. The price is $5,993.19. We recommend approval of this purchase.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve the purchase.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Last one for you, Wade.
All right. Thank you. This is, this is not a wreck on this one. This is just a need to replace our, or to restock our residential garbage carts, which are the brown carts. We, this is a best bid from Waste Equip for a total of $29,122.64. It's a truckload of them, of 624 carts. This is a budgeted item and once again, we recommend approval of this contract.
And just to remind y'all, this is a contract, so it will require the Mayor and City Clerk to be authorized to sign.
And not to put you on the spot, what do we charge residents for those carts?
We're about, just slightly, I think it's like $45. I don't know, Tom Reinhardt have to, we don't charge much markup on those things.
I think it is a little bit more, but you saw that the cost was $44.86. Yeah. No, we don't.
So actually, just a push through?
Basically, for the most part.
Okay. That's what I, that's what.
You know what the developed cart cost is and what we charge?
I believe it's $63 to $65 to the customer, Dan. I'm not really sure.
So I guess a little bit, little bit of extra.
Any other questions or discussion? If not, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion.
Do you want to say contract number? No? I had it noted.
Did that motion include the?
Yes.
Sign allowing me and the City Clerk to sign that contract?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Did the second include that?
Yes, it does.
Thank you. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Wade.
Thank you.
Mr. Greer, you're up next.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. FiberCom is currently finalizing a five-year contract to serve Internet to Anheuser-Busch. In order to serve the brewery, we would like to hire NCI to bore and install fiber and conduit to the location at a cost of $62,914.65. There'll also be some additional charges for materials and permitting with Georgia Power and the Bartra County Water Department. And Anheuser-Busch has agreed to pay $15,000 over a five-year term towards the capital cost of this build. After we complete this, we'll be less than a mile from the new industrial development along Bush Drive and get us closer to having a fiber ring under I-75. And we recommend this fiber build for your approval.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Stephen on this? If not, the Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dan, back to you.
Yes, sir, Mayor. The diversity training agreement with GMA, as one of my recommendations would be to have additional training for our city employees. This cost with GMA would be $6,000. We would, approved, would be conducting it later on this calendar year. And I recommend this approval with agreement with GMA.
Questions for Dan on this item? If there are none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Jones, only two from you tonight. I feel like a real council meeting.
I know. It's practice. I think first up is our belt filter press, the conveyor system for this. We have two presses. They press the residual solids out of the plant, de-water them, land apply those solids, use them for fertilizer. This is the system that conveys that material from the point of treatment to the point of loading into the trucks. The two conveyor systems that we have are original equipment. The first was put in in 91. The newer of the two was put in in 2000. These things run continuously. They are giving us some trouble operationally. We are out of adjustment in this and what we found out was that the manufacturer makes the links in the belt at 2 and 3/4 inches. They recommend you replace them when they stretch to 3 and 1/2 or 3 and 1/4. So we've, we've gotten all the life we can. We can't tighten it enough to make the belt drive like it should. It's not a complete scrap job. We're just going to replace the parts that have worn out. So we need to sole source this to the original equipment manufacturer for compatibility. That's Serpantex and they have given us a quote of 102,176.20 to replace both belts that we have and get that system back up to basically like-new performance.
I put Dan asked us in the work session, what's the turnaround time on that pretty?
It is relatively quick for parts. We were concerned about that.
Yeah.
What we have actually done is these belts were going to be slightly modified with the larger nutrient removal project and the contractor has agreed to install these belts when they're gonna be modifying the rest of the system anyway. So the turnaround time is basically based on when they get to that point and we feel like we'll comfortably beat that.
Good. All right. Any other questions for Bob on this item? And if there's none, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next one, Bob.
Yes, sir. Next item is the engineering for painting of the Fairview Water Tanks. Five-million-gallon steel tank. It was built in 1968. The issue at hand is twofold. One, we have paint delaminating off the outside of the tank. And that's a normal maintenance item with a metal tank. What, what makes this one different is the original 1968 coat of paint is underneath that and it's lead-based. I would like to stress for everybody listening, it's on the outside of the tank. It's not causing a problem with the water, but we do have to be very cautious about how we remove it. So we've retained Weidemann and Singleton Engineers to design that removal process, the containment process, the disposal, and the recoding and encapsulation of the material there. It's not just a typical spray another coat of paint on the outside of it, make it look pretty and go on. We want to get rid of the lead. We think that's the best, best way to go forward. Weidemann has given us a proposal for $63,515 to do all of that work. Would ask that council authorize the Mayor to sign all documents related to retaining those services and it is a budgeted project and is funded by the 2018 revenue bonds that we issued. So that will be paying for both this and the recode.
Okay. Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Chief McCann, the next couple, please.
In 2018, we purchased new tasers, 50 new tasers. This is the third payment on those tasers, $14,000 to Axon Corporation. We have two more payments left.
Thank you. Is this asset seizure?
Federal asset forfeiture money. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next time.
Approximately 18 months ago, we seized a 2011 Chevrolet four-wheel-drive pickup truck and it was subsequently forfeited to the police, to the City of Cartersville. I'm requesting that the council approve surplusing this vehicle so we can auction it off on gov deals. It's in the court order for us to auction it off and I'm requesting that approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Mr. Reinhardt, while you're making your way up, we do have one item to add. The Chair will entertain a motion to add that item.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That item is added. We'll deal with that in a minute. Mr. Reinhardt, your first two items, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Honorable Mayor and Council, the engagement letter spells out the understanding of the services to be provided by the city's audit firm, Malding and Jenkins LLC. It also lists responsibilities of the city's management with respect to the documents that will be provided by the city. It further states that the, or spells out the procedures that will be used by Malding and Jenkins. And finally, it mentions the agreed-upon price of $59,000 to be paid by the city for the fiscal year 2020 audit to be completed. This is done on an annual basis and extended to the auditing practices. I recommend authorization for the Mayor, City Manager, and myself, the Finance Director to sign the fiscal year 2020 audit engagement letter for the Malding and Jenkins LLC as submitted.
Thank you. Questions for Tom on this? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Yes, sir. Honorable Mayor and Council, the MEAG questionnaire is an annual document required by MEAG for the city to complete part of and the auditors to complete a part of. The questionnaire gives MEAG an objective view that the city is following the GASP standards and that the city's electric fund financial statements are accurately presented. The letter spells out what the city is responsible for and what the audit firm is responsible for. There is a charge for this above and beyond the normal audit fees. Malding and Jenkins usually charges an hourly rate for their work. I recommend the authorization for the Mayor, City Manager, and Finance Director to sign the engagement letter for the Malding and Jenkins LLC as submitted for the MEAG questionnaire.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Before you give that finance report, Tom, do you want to say that there's an item that is, there are two items that are tabled. Those will remain on the table until November 5th. And Mr. Porter, if you will handle the one added item before we do the financials.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bring for you an opportunity here to use some of our tourism product development funds. Talked with Ellen Archer. She's in favor of this and recommends approval to use 28,000 on Church Street Bridge Painting. Kyle Russell Painting has offered to paint that at no cost for labor, just as long as we pay the material costs. And that's 28,000. Also, like to use, spend 26,630.50 with new Christmas decorations. This will replace the remaining ones that we were not able to replace last fiscal year. This is through holiday designs. But both these purchases will be using tourism product development funds that the CBB manages.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? If not, the Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for your patience. Tom, the finance report, please.
You're quite welcome. Honorable Mayor and Council, we'll be looking at the August 2020 and comparing to August 2019 financial report. And the general fund revenue decreased by, from last August by 2.1 million dollars. Remember, last, last month, we had an audit, an audit error that needed to be corrected. That's the major part of that. The expenses have increased by $172,000. Two areas of revenue I look at on a monthly basis, local often sales tax. You'll see currently, there is a $61,000 increase in that. I will tell you that recently, we've gotten some advice from our audit firm that the, there was a large adjustment in the month of September that has not been adjusted out but will need to go to fiscal year 2020 because of prior years. I believe this is an audit that was performed on a large corporation here in Bartra County area, maybe the City of Georgia, that was involved numerous years, I think 2015 through 2018, 19. So that money, which is a whole of $116,000, will be moved from this fiscal year to last fiscal year. So you'll see that decrease in next month's numbers. And the billing permits and inspection fees have about a $7,000 increase there. Water and sewer fund revenues decreased over last August by $203,000. Expenses increased by $774,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, increased capital expenses, decrease in debt service, and then a decrease in transfers in general fund. Revenues have, I'm sorry, in the gas fund, revenues have decreased from last August by $467,000. Expenses decreased by $448,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, decreased cost of purchase gas, decreased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. The electric fund revenues have increased over last year by $2,600. Expenses increased by $74,000. This is due to increased personnel costs, decreased operating expenses, increased cost of purchase electricity, decreased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. And stormwater fund revenues decreased from last August by $2,500. Expenses increased by $38,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and decreased capital expenses. Solid waste fund revenues increased from last August by $12,000 while the expenses increased by $11,000. This increase is due to increased personnel expenses and decreased operating expenses. And probably, finally, in the fiber objects fund, revenues increased from last August by $24,000. Expenses decreased by $19,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, decreased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. On our cash position side, just to note that the total unrestricted cash balance has decreased slightly and the total restricted cash balance has increased.
Okay. Thank you. Anything to add?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to make counsel aware, looking at the apples, apples comparison on the general fund, we are holding our own between last year, last fiscal year, and this fiscal year. Again, we're only two months into the year, but doing fairly well compared to other cities who may have downs more substantially in our general fund. Utilities, as you can see in the report, we're doing, again, fairly well. Gas, typically this time of year, or July and August are lower, but we got a little cold spell here in October so those numbers should go up a little bit, but overall, we're doing okay and holding our own even with the governor changing his mind on CARES Act funding that we won't get additional money from. And that, and that CARES Act money won't show up until September reports.
Yeah. I was gonna make a comment. Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
I was gonna make a comment on that. The governor back in late June had sent a letter to the city, actually every city in every county, and outlined what his plan was for CARES Act funding and supporting cities and counties. Yesterday, his decision was to pull what was gonna be Phase 2 and Phase 3 of monies that were to go to cities and counties and decided to use that money instead to repay the Georgia Unemployment Trust Fund. And so I know that we had looked at what we thought was coming our way, only because the governor told us so, but it isn't now. So wanted to make sure council knew that that was the case. We'll be just fine. So if there's nothing else on the financial front, I do want to go ahead and start the discussion. I don't want to thank those that have made time to be here. I want to kind of lay out how I'd like for this to go. I have talked with council about this, is that many of you are here to talk about something that we don't even know exactly what council is gonna choose to do. So the first portion of this evening, this discussion, I'd like for it to be amongst council to at least express or discuss what it is that you would like to do or would not like to do, depending on your perspective. And then, once there are some parameters or questions or, you know, some details put to it, then give the people that are here to speak the opportunity to address those concerns or other concerns that may be. But I'd like to start off with a conversation amongst council. I have asked Keith Lovell, our city attorney, yesterday to bring that anything that is asked for from a council person to be, to be sent to all of council and then also for any of the materials that we'll be looking at tonight to make sure that they're available on the screen for people that are, that are here. I'll ask Mr. Porter right now if it's possible to perhaps put a copy. This is a copy of a draft ordinance from?
2019.
2019 that we just got the hard copies of this evening. And, but if we can put this on the city website so that anybody here will have the opportunity to look at this and review this.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that. So, that being said, again, council, you got a hard copy tonight. I doubt any of you were reading this while we were in our meeting. But, and I don't know that we necessarily need to lean on this, but I will turn it over to anybody on council who wants to talk about downtown entertainment zone and what you would like to do.
Well, Mayor, I'll, I'll start out a little bit here and get it going to give, you know, obviously, all of us on council sort of have an idea about this. It came up, as you said, a couple of years ago, maybe a year ago, and it sort of died. And in the meantime, obviously, we have festival zones that I think have went pretty well. And that's where, for those of you that don't know, that's basically just mapped-out areas that allows open container inside of that area. And I don't think there's been any issues there. And then of late, it was the puff problem and maybe bad naming. Not sure about that. But essentially, all that is, is allowing someone to walk on a mapped area from one establishment to the other with an open container. And a lot of rules go into that, but we've done that over the last, I think there was one back in the spring. And now there's one that's been approved for, for the Halloween weekend. Sort of to clear this up, and I know the Mayor has made comments in the past of- of, instead of carving out certain things and saying, hey, we can do this, this, this weekend, or this day, but not the other days, and sort of, in a way, picking and choosing who's allowed and who's not allowed. Council had, had entertained this ordinance in the past, but it never got any traction. And Mayor and I talked a few weeks back, in the middle of the, the pub crawl thing, about maybe it would be best for us to sort of tell you guys where we stand on it as a whole. Now, you'll hear that, not just me, I'm not, not speaking for council. And then obviously, with your input, then maybe we can either put this to bed and make something of it, or, or not. You know, ultimately, it's all of our city, and we need to all make the best decisions for downtown, which we have a very downtown. You know, we've heard, or I have heard, especially in the pub crawl, it's getting few and few, but fewer and fewer of us that say we're born and raised here. But I, I was born and raised here, and I went to college, and I couldn't wait to come back here. So, I do know that there's concerns. I was raised country Southern Baptist, and I'm now a member of Sam Jones Memorial Church. So, I, I get all the angles from it, and truly care about our, our community and our downtown, which I think, I think most everybody in this room can, can say that. So, the ordinance, obviously, as Mayor said, to you guys, because this is a lot, and I have read it. I'd asked for a copy of it a while back, but for those of you definitely read it to understand everything that's in here, but essentially, all it is basically saying is that you're able to take a beverage, an alcoholic beverage, from one sales establishment, and, and you are able to walk and, and go through downtown. Now, what all that entails is up to, obviously, all of us to discuss. But this ordinance, as it sits, I think is pretty well-written, and I, and I know that a lot of effort went into it. The two things that are outside of the ordinance that I think council really never got an agreement on was the map of where you can actually go and not go. As a downtown, we definitely want to respect our churches, and, you know, our downtown is special. We have a railroad train runs right through it, and we have churches that flank a lot of the corners. So, very respectful of that and the map. I have an idea, I've drawn one out, obviously, we won't talk about that tonight, but it's one that basically gets all of our, our sales establishments while respecting the outer banks of our downtown. I mean, we have Tavern Apple, we have Sam Jones, and we have the Presbyterian Church up the street, and then we might have one or two others. I apologize if I missed those. But there's also times, so not only would we restrict where it can be, not just make it the entire downtown, but maybe certain times, and, you know, just throwing it out there, starting a Thursday afternoon, or after work, maybe the 5:00, 5:30, 6:00, 6:30 time zone, until maybe Sunday afternoon, depending on, and a lot of downtown, if you've never been downtown on Sundays, it's not that much going on. There's only a few establishments open. So again, that can be open to, to, to discussion. And then outside of that, if you did it from like a Thursday to a Saturday night, or to a Sunday, then you have certain holidays, and we're not talking about Thanksgiving and Christmas and things of that sort, but maybe 4th of July, New Year's Eve, Halloween, Memorial Day, things of that sort, where there's stuff going on, to just make it very clear. So if they are going to try to have, and this, again, this is the infancy of it, and, and I, I'm just getting it started, but inside of it, we do have the festival zones and things of that sort. I don't know if they'll go away, or this supersedes it, or maybe nothing happens and those are still there. But council, I apologize for, for taking so much time, but that's where, I'm not saying the consensus, but I think that's where we started, was, hey, here's the ordinance, a lot of verbiage in the ordinance, the main concern is the map and the times at which we allow it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman.
So Keith, would you clarify for me, the ordinance that we have in front of us that we've talked about in the past, does this supersede festival ordinances altogether? There would be no more need for the DDA to make, they still have to go through the DDA for the festival, but the fencing and the absolute, this is where you've got to stand to enjoy your beer, or does that go away within the map?
As most legal answers are, yes and no. If the map y'all ultimately decided on included all the area that the DDA is allowed to have a festival in, then yes, it would eliminate the festival zone as something to have. You know, but if it wasn't, and there was some area where DDA wanted to have a festival that wasn't included in this map area, then they would still need to have a festival. The other thing that could possibly trigger festival zones remaining, if y'all decided to, would be if y'all limited the hours of this, you know. Just say y'all limited this to, say, 5:00 to 10:00 PM at night, and the festival wanted to be from noon to 10:00 PM at night. In that case, then you might need to still, still have the festival zone in existence. But really, it'll depend on what y'all ultimately decide with respect to the boundaries and the time limits, whether DDA would feel after that that they would still want to have festivals outside that area and outside time. Now, do remember, the festival zones, although we've only used them for the DDA, also are allowed to be used at other city venues, such as Sam Smith Park. So there may be some need to keep it there as well. I will tell you with respect to the handout that I gave you, the only two pages you need to pay attention to on these six pages or whatever are page 2 and 3. Remember, when we talked about this two years ago, it was part of a comprehensive overview, and a lot of these other ordinancees, y'all have already addressed, or didn't have things to do with the festival zone. The only thing that deals with the downtown entertainment zone is pages 2 and 3 of this ordinance.
I, I would think that regardless of what council decides to do, that the entertainment zone, excuse me, that the festival zones would need to remain. And here's, here's a thought why, is because we do allow other entities to have festivals downtown, and if they were to rent the downtown area, perhaps they had their own vendors, they do incur some types of liability for the actions that go on that festival zone while they're in there. And so, I know this is a little bit down the road, but I would personally would like to see festival zones remain, because again, there needs to be accountability for people that are going to be operating specific festivals, and again, they may want to restrict who comes into that area based on the fact that there are liabilities there.
Well, I think that the festival, so if you break down the ordinance on the festival, it is the festival, and then is the festival zone inside the festival. We don't make that very clear in what we do, how we operate that.
Currently, or in this one?
Currently.
Yeah.
So, usually what happens is we make the whole festival area the festival zone. So we just, that's how it's been operated. We just blanket the whole area as, that we, if you go back and read the ordinance on festivals, it is us saying, we agree this is a festival, and we agree that you can have a festival zone in that. And so, like, to, to Mayor's point, the festival zone, or the festival ordinance, is in Park and Rec. That's where the ordinance rests. So, yeah, if you have anything anywhere else, you would have to keep the festival zone, or kept, keep the festival ordinance, which I think works downtown, which has worked downtown to, to, to Jace's point, has worked downtown. And I think that though we've even made some changes to it, it has not worked perfectly. It is still very porous when you have a festival. We do not require barriers, and we have seen that take place. We've seen people walk out and come in with beverages, and, and that has not always been enforced very well.
Keith, is that true? We don't have barriers? I didn't think you could go...
Originally, we had barriers in that, but after y'all had several meetings on it, and DDA's recommendations, that they didn't have the staff to enforce the barriers, you took those out.
Yeah, we, we, they used to have to actually put up physical fencing, and the, I mean, the physical fencing was, it was cumbersome, and it was, it's kind of an eyesore a little bit, and council had decided to put up marking, you know, markers and pylons that kind of outlined the zone.
You still have the zone.
You still have the zone, but, but initially, there was a physical barrier that if I, you know, if there's a three-foot-high fence or a four-foot-high fence...
I got it. Another one question in what you were saying, I just want to make sure I did.
Yeah, we have boundaries.
Because we still have boundaries.
But we don't have barriers.
Okay.
So, people can come and go. But I don't think, that has not been enforced as well as it could have been, or could be, which then when you look at this boundary, when you look at the boundary of downtown, it's very porous. It's very, I mean, there's a lot of things that would have to take place for even that boundary to be, if you want to say, enforced, and who would we have that? Who then would we have enforced that? So, I think there's, I think there's some issues when we look at that, when we compare and look at the festival zone. I think the festival zone works, and I think, you know, when you start talking about times and holidays and dates, I think that the festival zone works for what we have now, and not going towards a entertainment zone. So, I'm, I'm not, go through a litany of, I mean, that, I mean, this is the first time I've seen this. I don't remember seeing it before. Was it in 18? This was done?
This, yeah.
So it's been a while.
Yeah, I mean, this was as a result of a visioning session it was given, and council talked about it for several months. Alcohol Control Board did. It went to y'all. Y'all approved like the brown bagging, the wine part, and the festival part. Y'all had a real big hangup with the map at that time, were going to do further discussions, and it died.
Yeah.
I mean, basically what happened?
Okay. I just have to read, I have to take time to read through it, but I just, I still, this is probably not the direction that I would see our city going. I think it has a lot to do with the identity of our town, that it is a, it is a, it changes the character of, of our downtown when we go into this direction. When you talk about entertainment zones, it's, what, what do we have downtown to entertain? Okay, that's what I thought. So, like, right now, that was a question, but that's what I thought. So right now...
I think we should have things, didn't we?
We should, we should. Like, we have the Grand, and we have the Legion, but we don't have another music venue. We don't have entertaining things coming down. We don't have a, like a theater, or, or we don't have a dancing, or what, what have you. So when you talk about entertainment, the only thing to draw us then to that, draw us to quote-unquote, an entertainment district or zone, is then the opportunity to walk around downtown with alcohol. And I don't think that that is the drawing point that we want to make for the character of our downtown, is to bring the establishment, or the, the alcohol from the inside to the outside. It does not, it does not, I don't think it does anything for our, for the character of, and the patrons downtown.
You know that you and I share a lot of similar sentiments on the topic. However, I don't want to get hung up on the fact that it's generally called an entertainment zone, just like a pub crawl could be named a sip and stroll, and it's something different. I would contend that retail and dining and, and having a great atmosphere is, is entertaining for most on a weekend.
Agreed.
So, so to, and I'll pretend not to be offended that you said we didn't have a theater downtown.
We have a movie...
I'm just kidding.
We have a movie, we don't have a movie here. We do have...
But, but anyway, I mean, again, whatever it's called, we can call it something different, but generally, these zones in downtown areas that allow for open containers are called entertainment zones. So, that's why we're using the terminology that, that we are. So, anything else from council on what you want to see, or what parameters you envision, or any other details before we get public comment?
Would the dates and times be more specific on this ordinance?
Oh, they could be, yes, you know.
There's nothing in here about dates or times.
Well, there is a time. It does actually say it has to stop at midnight, but, yes, I mean, remember, this was just the initial first draft template for y'all to talk and discuss. You know, you can make dates, times, months, hours, whatever you want. Nothing in this ordinance is set in stone. It was just a beginning discussion point for y'all.
There, at, at visioning, there was a discussion about, hey, what about this? And then, I believe Mr. Lovell went into some of the other surrounding communities and basically said, here's the general, this is basically the, the beginning template, and this can be altered by council in any way that you want it. So there's no, this wasn't drafted by you specifically for that. This is just meant to provide generality, so council could inform themselves on what an ordinance like this might look like.
Yeah, and the map that was attached wasn't envisioned to be the final map. It was basically just to include all the existing commercial properties in the, in the downtown sort of city area, and then for y'all to work to determine where y'all wanted that to go.
Well, and again, I'll put my two cents in on the, on the boundary of it as currently constructed, and I know, and I don't mean this as any slight towards anybody, but, you know, I know when, when we've drawn other zones in the city, the easiest way to draw boundaries is along street lines, because they're a little bit easier to define than just kind of cutting a building in half and having something square. But to me, the, the configuration of it running, most notably, all the way up to Barto Street, I don't really know what that's encompassing all the way up there that would be of benefit.
The city court.
The, the, yeah, the reason why that was included...
Because it's down the road there.
Is, at the time, council was potentially considering several offers from maybe to locate a hotel at that site.
That's true.
And, so we wanted to include that in the overall area for y'all to start whittling down. And the reason why the lines were jagged is, we didn't want to include any existing residential properties, and, you know, if y'all wanted to, y'all could, but we just thought, we just put all the commercial properties on that map, and then y'all go from where you want it to there. That map wasn't done to be the final product.
Right. I understand. Thank you. And thank you, I forgot about the hotel piece, so. Anything else from council on the topic?
With, with this, with an ordinance like this, like this overlaying, is there, who bear, we then bear the cost of this, like signage and...
Yes.
And that, not the, not the downtown businesses, or...
No, of, of course, you know, you could, you know, potentially ask the DDA to raise fees to downtown businesses, and they could be, be required to post some additional signage or other things like that. But yes, normally, all signs required by any city ordinance, the cost is the city's.
And is our, our police force, are they at full capacity now, or...
About five down right now.
Five down?
Yes.
So we don't, so, okay.
That's not uncommon. But your point's well taken.
I mean, we could drop the number of what we require, and it would be full staff, right?
That's true, too. It's a good idea.
Matty the Chief, old.
I believe you did earlier.
I hope so.
Have you got any questions regarding that?
Well, I was just gonna say...
I can tell you what his answer will be, if you got, when you guys pass the policies and we'll enforce them.
That's right. Well, no, I guess the same thing as back when we did the brunch bill, and we, we extended hours. I always like to ask our, our, our police chief, is this a, is this going to be an issue? Do you see an issue? Again, he's not here, so maybe you can get that answered.
Yes, sir. Okay. Anything else from council? All right. I'll open up the floor to the, anybody from the public who would wish to speak on the topic. I will ask you, when you come forward, to, to make sure you give your name and your address for our clerk. Julia will really appreciate that. I also want to make sure that we're plowing new ground, so if somebody has said something, it's, it's in the record, and we don't necessarily need to say it again. Come on forward.
All right.
And, and I'll speak for myself on this. I'm, and I, we're, we're here as long as, as people want to speak.
Yeah, well, I've got about two hours worth, but...
Yeah, well, I've got about two hours worth, but...
I'd like the bathroom break.
Well, I'll probably do that.
My name is Grady Clark, I pastor Calvary Chapel River Oaks off of Nelson Street, which is not in the zone that you guys are proposing here. The concerns that I have are not necessarily the drawing of the map. I mean, you can look at the map, you can see the areas that you've drawn out, but the truth is, is that people are going to be carrying alcohol from place to place to place throughout that map, they're not going to stay within that map when they finish that last drink. They're going to wherever their cars are parked. And those cars may be parked in church parking lots, or other parking lots, or wherever else, and I think that you're looking at opening up, I don't know the legalities, I mean, you know, we do have assistant city attorney here, and I'm sure you've investigated all the legalities of what could take place, based on the alcohol usage, the fact that these people, I don't know what the limits are, I've heard, and you can correct me on this, or give me more information, but I've heard, there's like a ten-drink limit, am I hearing that correctly from somewhere?
No.
That's not been, that's not been mentioned. Is there a limit?
No, it's basically just normal service, you go in an establishment, they serve you a drink. If you wanted to leave an establishment, they would pour it in a designated clear plastic cup, and then you could walk around downtown with what's in that drink, I mean, yeah.
Okay, so you could technically go from bar, or restaurant and bar, to restaurant and bar, to restaurant and bar, and continue to fill up your cup?
Well, you, you would get a new cup at each restaurant and bar. It's against the law for a restaurant or bar to allow you to bring alcohol from another establishment into there.
Okay.
Department of Revenue founds on that.
Okay, I understand that. Okay, but technically, you know, if you're out walking around, and the purpose of having this ordinance is to be able to allow people to do this, what are you adding to the community? What value is it bringing? That's my, that's my ultimate concern, because the value of bringing alcohol, if it's all about the tax dollar you're going to make off of it, or the fact that you're going to draw more people to downtown by doing this, what type of people are you drawing? If it's called an entertainment zone, it should literally be called an adult beverage zone. That's really the change that you're making, it has nothing to do with entertainment. We just mentioned a minute ago, the restaurants are entertaining, you come to eat the food, you come in town to do all the shopping on Main Street, go around, do all the things that you do. Then you might want to go, go to the museums. We have the best museums in the southeast. We've got things that draw people to Carterville and to the downtown district. Adding alcohol is not going to bring any assets, it's going to bring a lot of problems. And I just heard, too, you say you're five down on the police department right now. Well, I believe you're going to probably had to add more, and some part timers to, you know, to have them on hand, and be ready for whatever may take place when people are walking around with alcohol in their hands. And I personally don't think it's, it's, you're really marketing to a certain age group of people. We have a lot of families in Barto County, we have a lot of families that come into downtown every day of the week, including the weekends and the dates that this would be going on. I don't personally want to see young kids exposed to this, I think it sends the wrong message. And I think from a biblical standpoint, I'm not going to preach to you, as a pastor, I could, but that's not what we're here for. Each one of you has your own place of faith. I would encourage you to look at that place of faith, and find for within yourself if you think you're actually doing something positive for this community by allowing this to come, or whether or not you're going to actually add some problems, it's, it's, once you, once you put it into place, it's hard to go back. Personally, I would like you to just go ahead and repeal the whole pub crawl altogether, but that's a whole discussion for another day. But these are my thoughts, my concerns. I pray every day for this community, I pray for you guys, and I appreciate what y'all do. You guys are here in, to benefit the city, to make decisions for this city, and I respect each one of you for doing that, but I would encourage you to dig deep within to find out what real value you're going to bring by adding this extra element of continued alcohol up and down the streets during any time they, they apply to do it. So, those are my thoughts, thank you for having me, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Hey, how you doing?
Great.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. My name is Bobby Lawrence, I'm with Anchor Ministry. We have a building on fifty-three Stonewall Street, and there's several pastors, a lot of church members here, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, most of us oppose this. We apologize for being quiet for so long. I meet with pastors every day, we haven't been engaged, we've been quiet on the issue. I'm also a descendant of Sam Jones. You know, prohibition was brought about by his preaching. He went to Macon, Georgia, over a hundred and thirty saloons went out of business, thirty-eight brothels shut down. He goes to Nashville, Tennessee, over a hundred something brothels, our saloon shut down, and I oppose everything about this, every inch of it I oppose. We've been quiet, can't do nothing about the toothpaste that's out of the tube, but we can stop squeezing it. And I just appreciate what y'all do, but we're going to start showing up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kenneth Dowdy, Pastor Floyd Creek Baptist. Heard a lot of discussion about what we're going to call it. You know, Ahab was married to Jezebel. Everyone of us in here heard Jezebel, what's in her name? It don't matter what you call it. I can combat this biblically. I don't want to do that. Don't want to do that. Here's what I want us to do. I'm a business owner, I'm a pastor, the greatest title I got is the same title y'all got. Daddy, mama. I live in Taylorsville. I got a daughter that works at Chick-fil-A. I got a daughter that works at Fazoli's. Y'all going to close downtown off when this is going on?
That is not currently listed as a requirement of the ordinance.
That's your question, yeah, good. If my daughter's coming home from work, eleven-thirty, twelve o'clock, and someone intoxicated, because, I mean, I heard there was a drink limit, now I just heard there is no limit. And someone intoxicated steps out in front of my daughter on narrow Main Street. I mean, you can't, you know as well as I do when cars parked on Main Street, you can't see in the middle of the day somebody crossing over. If somebody steps out in front of my daughter, and my daughter hits that person, and the person's intoxicated, my daughter carries that with her how long? Forever. Whose fault is that? Well, as councilman, would say, the guy who was intoxicated. It's not true, is it? It's your fault. That blood's on your hands, because you approved them to walk around drinking. Who, it's not if, every one of you know I'm right, it's not if it happens, it's when it happens. And what I've heard tonight, every one of us are looking at this from an economic standpoint. Man, what does your heart say? What if it was your wife? What if it was your husband that hit somebody that stepped out in front of him? Even though you're not at fault, you carry that with you. Is that what you want? Is that what we want to portray? I can make it biblical, I'd rather make it about the greatest title I carry, daddy. I don't want my daughters to go through that. Better yet, I don't want my daughters to be hit by a drunk driver. You can't tell me DUI, and I'm not going to go up. I used to be a drunk. What am I going to do before I leave the house? I'm going to drink three or four before I leave. Is it a sin to drink? Not for me to say, I'm not going to get into doctrine. Guys, you got to protect the welfare of the people, not your economic pockets. This can't be about money. I mean, it's got to be about the safety of the citizens in Barto County, and you're telling me you're going, you can call it wherever you want to call it. You can call it Jezebel, or you can call it Gomer. Jose married a woman named Gomer, I don't know who named my daughter that. You can call it wherever you want to call it. At the end of the day, you're going to have teenage children getting off of work, coming through downtown, going home, through a bunch of drunks. And I can say that because I was one. Is that what we want? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Jennifer Capes, my residence is eight Granger Drive, but my business, which is Coconuts, is located at one fifteen South Gilmer Street. For reference, that's right between the Four Way Lunch and Mission Tire. We are opposed. We're opposed because, well, public drunkenness is something that we often deal with. Monday, we had an inebriated gentleman who seemed a little bit agitated. We just watched him walking down with the alley that's known as Thompson Street, and he was weaving in and out of cars in our drive-through when he finally spotted us standing at store, ice cream delivery driver, and he came up, and he was agitated at how loud the truck was. He said he was trying to sleep, and it's like this is six o'clock in the evening. We also have another gentleman who we affectionately refer to as Cussing Man. He comes by our shop quite frequently, thankfully, not always drunk, but when he is drunk, he's flailing his arms about, he's speaking very loudly, cussing very loudly, he seems to be having like a very animated conversation with himself that doesn't seem to be going well. You know, we've never had any issues with the pub crawls or anything like that, but I do have that concern as a business owner and the owner of, you know, a family-friendly establishment. You know, we want to create a certain, certain atmosphere for our customers, and, you know, I, I do fear that if this were a daily occurrence, is that, am I getting this right, that it would be a seven-day thing, or is it...
It's open, it's open.
It's open.
There's nothing set.
Okay.
If this, if we move forward, there's not...
Okay, so, I mean, I mean, my concerns are, am I going to have, you know, groups of people who might be walking from one bar to another? And just for the record, I am between several establishments that are on that map, that it's possible that I would have groups of people who could be coming by, could be kind of rowdy, and could be loud. That's not the kind of, you know, atmosphere that I want to have. We also have an outdoor patio, and, you know, I'm like, we, we're actually one of the latest open businesses in the downtown, in the summer, we're open till eleven, or to the la, as we always say, till the last customer is served. Sometimes that's eleven-thirty, and then we're there for a good hour cleaning up. Are we going to have people, you know, at late at night who are stumbling about our parking lots? Are we going to have, you know, people who are going to be sitting down at our tables, and then the next morning, I'm going to have to clean up, you know, broken beer bottles, trash that are, you know, laid out everywhere? This summer was particularly brutal for the onslaught of teenagers that we had in neighboring parking lots. They were very loud, they drove their loud trucks, and, yes, the police were called a few times, and I understand the police have other things to do that are more important than babysit teenagers who are being obnoxious and loud, but like the previous gentleman said, you know, if I have obnoxious teenagers who are driving too fast in front of my business, and then you might have people who are wandering about, and Gilmer Street is not well-lit, it's just not. A lot of parts of downtown, I know that's another discussion for another day, but in my opinion, they are not well-lit. So, I do think safety is a huge concern for me, maintenance is also a concern, and just general atmosphere of our downtown, those are all concerns for us. I love all the businesses, we've been there for sixteen years, and when we first opened, it was like Appalachian Grill. I mean, there've been so many, great restaurants and additions to our downtown, and we absolutely love them all, we love, love, love having neighbors, and we just want the city to continue to prosper, but just want, you know, these people who are going to benefit from this to consider all the businesses in downtown, because I do view them as family members, and I hope that they view us the same way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, can you give me your last name, please?
Capes.
Capes, thank you.
Hey, Council, how's it going? My name is Will Dowdy, eight Briar Cliff Road, Rome, Georgia, three zero one six one. I've always said from telling them, I'm going to tell you, I spent the last four years in a community driven by entertainment zones. It's one of the coolest things, you walk in here and you're like, this is crazy, because I'm completely against it. Murfreesboro, Tennessee, it's amazing to see what a community has, has been changed in Christ, driven on entertainment zones. You know what these entertainment zones look like? It's surrounding communities in that area, stretched about forty-five miles from north to southeast to west. And they started doing concerts through churches that were plugged into the community. They started to have concerts here, 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 come, come, they started seeing thousands of people come, and they started seeing millions of people come, because of these entertainment zones that were set up for youth, kids, to come worship, right? Man, it's an identity issue. I mean, that's really what it is, we're trying to identify with something that's not lasting. It's not going to last. I've been there, I've been there. I spent the last teen, I spent the last four years of my life serving the Lord, but before that, I served myself, I served my sin. I know where it got me, we can say, well, I can just have one, I can have two, because I was that guy, I can smoke this joint, and, you know, it leads to this. But it was an identity issue. I was trying to find myself in what the world seems to be great. And it brought a lot of death to my life. Not only that, it brought death to my family, it brought death to a lot of things, it brought just separation, bridges were burnt, there were no more. But I stand here today, I've been redeemed, I mean, really. And if you know the Lord, if you know who he is, then you'll take a stand too, because that's the only thing that's lasting. And if you claim to stand on the word of God, stand on it. You can't have both, you can't, you know, you can't lean on the fence, you can't be hot, you can't be cold, because you've still got a little self in you. So, I say, hey, I love it, but use it for the right reasons. You know what I mean? Use it for the right reasons. We've got kids, I mean, you say, everybody walking around downtowns with open containers. I mean, that's crazy. That's crazy. That's what I got. I'm from Rome, Georgia, they're doing the same thing, right? They're doing the same thing. But they, they can't smoke cigarettes, is that what it is, right? But they can carry a beer, or carry liquor in their hands? Makes no sense. I mean, that makes no sense. It really does not. So, I say, use it. I say it's great, but what's the purpose? You've got to have purpose behind it, it's definitely not alcohol, definitely not. It's great, though, I love it, but let's use it for the right reasons. You know, let's reach a new generation, let's show this generation, hey, it's not about a beer in your hand, or, you know, a pill, or a, you know what I mean? Let's give them what's lasting, because that's what matters. Amen?
Thank you.
My name is Janet Thornbury. We live at thirty-four West Main Street. I'm not a pastor, but the, we live basically right smack dab in the middle of this entertainment zone, and I can tell you from previous pub crawls, and from must-see me Saturday night, it's not pretty. It is not pretty downtown. The pub crawl two years ago, this month, was about the time we moved in, and they had, we didn't have the fence up in front of the house yet, and there was a pub crawl, and the people came nor, no, let's see, west, I'm not good with that, west on Main Street, and turned the corner and went toward the local. Okay, they stopped in front of our house, which is the old bank building, if anybody didn't know, and we had had lights put in the sidewalk part in front of our house, not the city sidewalk, but our park, and they stopped, and they looked at the lights, we have them on video, and they kicked one of them out with the heel of their shoe. And then they went on, they had a pub crawl cup in their hand, went on around to the local, stayed back there a while, came back and stopped and kicked out the other one, had a good laugh, and went on. Any Sunday morning, you can go out, and, I mean, and the guy that owns the local, bless his heart, he does, he does a good job with what he's got to work with back there, he tries hard, but that parking lot back there, behind all those restaurants on Main Street, at the back of our building, is a wreck. The salon next door is always, she says, she always comes up in the porch is covered in cigarette butts where they sit up on her porch and smoke, and the other morning, she said she came in and she had to step over vomit. I regularly can see people, you can just look out the window, and there's people urinating in the parking lot, there's all sorts of things I won't go into that go on back there in that parking lot, that you can see at any given time. And there's, people walk up the sidewalk beside our house, it's, they've got a beer bottle in their hand, they throw it against the side of the house, break it on the sidewalk, that's just funny, they just go on. It's all the time now. So, if this is... So if this is, you know, every weekend or every whenever, I just, I think it so destroys our downtown and there's trash. There's so much trash. And if they have a cup that they can't take into the next restaurant, what are they gonna do if they're right down on the ground? The, the trash cans are running over by Monday morning, but they don't care, I mean, they're, you can get a bag of trash out from around our house anytime. So I just want you to consider the image of our downtown. And I, I don't know, I mean, if people wanna drink, that's their business, but I, I just don't think it's necessary to do it on the street. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Ronald May from two twenty-four Walker Hill Circle. And uh, I do a lot of outreach in this town. And one reason I do outreach in this town is because I was one of these people that these guys are talking about. My first drink was from carrying liquor from one store to the other. No one gave it to me, I just picked it up off the ground. The beer that you can't take into this other establishment. So I became one of those young drunks at thirteen. So one reason I'm at where I'm at in my life is, is uh, is I know the, the bondage or the slavery or I don't know what you wanna put into it, that's Christian terms, um, of what alcohol does to a person. I spent time in New Orleans as a street minister. And if you think your streets are gonna stay clean, look what happens after a Christmas parade in your streets. But then, like this lady said, you add on the urine. I witnessed in New Orleans and broke up people having sex in between the buildings where young ladies were getting raped. My wife, when I told her I was gonna tell you about New Orleans, said, well, that's pretty extreme, well, that's where it heads. And these are your sons and your daughters, and sadly, it's your sons that are gonna be raping. That's the sad case of the matter. Why? Because they had a few little drinks. So I am opposed of open carrying anywhere. And uh, you wanna do it in the taverns, those owners have responsibility in the taverns. Who has the responsibility? You're putting that on the police department. You're putting that, I watched police a hundred yards away of a person getting raped because he didn't know what was going on. You can't yell to him because of the, because the noise is too loud and who knows how this will grow. A lot of these people have been talking about morals and biblical morals. Biblical morals are the only morals that we have, that's the only standard we have. Man can make up his own morals, but the biblical morals are it. And one of the biblical morals is, is that every drunkard will have their place in a lake of fire. Do we wanna be a part of that? Do we wanna stand before God and say that we open the doors to public drunkenness?
I'm Ryan Goss, I live at one twenty West Cherokee Avenue. We, we own four properties downtown. I've had a, I've had a business, been involved with businesses for twenty-three years in the downtown district. And nobody waved that downtown flag greater than I. I love our downtown, I'm proud of our downtown. I was a little caught off guard with this, I, I didn't realize this conversation was coming back around. And, and I, and I've tried to be, um, I, I'll be honest, I don't drink, uh, I do not judge people that drink. I understand, uh, in downtowns, I mean, when twenty-something years ago, when I was on the DDA, you know, you were trained, and it's still the case, that these struggling downtowns, what, what gets them off the ground? Restaurants, if you can get some successful restaurants. I, I was on the DDA, I was the chairman when Jackie Andrew came in the first time. And they told us about this concept, Appalachian Grill, and they want, they wanted to go under the bridge, which was like the absolute armpit of downtown. It has always been, you start with a restaurant. If you get a successful restaurant, then, then what'll piggyback is the retail. And if you can get that, you'll get sidewalk activity. And once you get sidewalk activity, then the residential's starting to follow, we've seen it happen here. All right, so there's something, and, and I'm gonna, I'll get into it in just a second, and I've, and I've, I've listened to everybody, and I, I took notes. Because I, I wanted to stay on point, but um, uh, Keith, I will tell you this, you may wanna take a restroom break, I'm Pentecostal, I might go all night, so. I'll, I'll try my best to keep my point.
I'll, I'll, I'll ask the mayor when I need to.
For a number of years, I used to travel around the state, I would talk and work with DDA, Georgia City Foundations, a lot of the state organizations, we'd talk about downtown development. I would talk about, you know, the process of restoring buildings. I traveled with these agencies, we would do the Heart and Soul Tour. We would pull into downtowns, we would um, look at the downtown, evaluate the downtown, consult those towns, those people were waiting for our feedback when we left. We had basically all the agencies in the state, we had economic development people with Georgia Power and other larger. So when this came up, I'm trying to take what I've heard there, I've tried to be unbiased. I have reached out to people, I've reached out to some of my friends that own businesses downtown, that are, that are food establishments that do sell alcohol, retail. Uh, I did reach out to our police chief. I, you know, I wanted to know, uh, what, what happens, who pays for the police during the, the pub crawls? You know? And, and as he shared with us, obviously that's paid by some of the fees for the pub crawl. Okay, so who's gonna get into paying? So I, I wanted to hear a little bit of everybody, I did ask a lot of questions, I saw surveys that got passed around. And I'm gonna fire away and I'll do my best to stay on point. A, a couple of comments that I've seen made were some concerns specifically with businesses. I know one of them was table twenty-one, the planner outside, they can't have a fenced area. I think when we do have issues that are alcohol-driven issues, we need to sort of address them singly and not try to throw a blanket over the whole district and try to address smaller issues. Uh, I don't know if that's factoring into this or not, but it, that was one of the responses that I got, that it was. I, I, I'm really concerned about the map. I'm the only single-family house in the entertainment district. And on behalf of my wife, she wants to come out of that district if you're considering it, she wants nothing to, to do with that. But we are, all, my, all my properties are in that district and, and two of them are the corners of the districts, I, I mean, I don't wanna be a part of it. I, I have things in my leases that prohibit certain activity because I know what standard I want kept. So just whoever makes the map up, know that that's our input on that. There's some obstacles I see with this, it's not all, uh, this is not obviously all the obstacles. One thing, when a, if you have a business now that serves an alcoholic beverage, you have a sort of a point of, of origin. If they continue to pour, they let somebody walk out that door, they know they're drunk, they did not take the responsibility of calling a cab or calling nine one, nine one one, and they go out there and they, they kill your, your wife, okay? You want answers. If you have this unlimited, there, there's no way to track loose alcohol like this, like this ordinance is talking about. You want answers, now in the current format, at least they can go back and they can go to bar number A or restaurant number A and say, there's a problem here with the way you're operating. And you have a lot of things on the book to protect the citizens in those situations. People that are irresponsible, convenience stores that are responsible, you have the ability to do things to punish them when they're not responsible. You have just removed that veil when you do this. One thing too, that talked about underage drinking, some of the people at the state level that I talked about, um, pointed that out, that that's a big problem. You have a little bit better opportunity now of monitoring when you're in a restaurant, who's drinking it. When somebody carries that out, they can hand it off. Now, can they go to a convenience store and do it? Sure they can, but that's one more opportunity in the downtown district. And this is a family-friendly district, so that is, that is a point that I think needs to be taken into consideration. What other issues, they're saying they're having a problem with a lot of entertainment districts. People going in, buying one drink, getting the cup, they've got the cooler in their vehicle they're loading up. That is like a massive problem. No economic benefit to the businesses downtown, the convenience store on the corner selling to them in volume and, and they're saucing up. And, I mean, I hate to say it that way, but apparently a lot, and, and I know we're talking about maybe five or ten percent of people, it's ninety, ninety-five percent of people responsible. But with this situation, we are talking about a certain percentage that are irresponsible. Who cleans up the mess? I mean, Janet talked about it. I, I'll, I'll tell you this, and if you want pictures, there, there's about eight pages. Last Saturday at about one o'clock, my wife and I got in the truck, I had to go over and then pick up a trailer that we had locked up in, in the downtown district. And we were talking about this ordinance, and I told Lori, I said, I guarantee you I can pull up. It's Saturday, I guarantee you in four minutes, I can take ten to fifteen pictures of stuff laying around. There is chamber parking lot, the gutters of the street, um, public parking lots, private property. We have to, a lot of ti, basically on Mondays, if I go in to get that trailer, I have to clean broken glass out. All of this, just like that. You know, I sent an email to Matt this summer and he, he responded very quickly and the success of downtown is this, that, that festival that we've got going on Saturday is incredible. But what's the bad part of it? It, it creates trash, so the city was trying to play, keep up. We have issues because of our success. We are, we are burdening public works to a certain degree and probably the police because of our success. I don't think we need to add this to that. You know, and I'll, I'll go back to the police and I'll say this, and he's not in here and he didn't ask me to say this. If we want a topic, let's pay our police officers better and let's retain them and, and, and raise that bar. That's a department that needs our help. And I've, and I've wanted to say that for a long time, so I'll take that, that point right here, but they do a great job. They do, they do a great job, they go above and beyond and those men are not paid nowhere near what they're worth. I, I was having a conversation with somebody a, at a state level, and we were talking about economic benefits and the myth of it. You take Decatur, which has carved out a small area, you go down to Decatur, you got, some of the entertainment component, you got Eddie's Attic, you got the restaurants, you got the bar. When you go down there, that's what you're going for. A lot of the downtowns that approve this, well, a lot of the downtowns are basically man-made downtowns, they took a, like Swanee, you know, it was a cow pasture. They built this downtown, they created what they wanted, they create their image for their district, it's artificial. You've got places that, that use this because they don't have a clue and they don't have vision and they're grasping for it. A couple of examples that I was given, well, they've approved this, I, I know personally about the condition of their downtown and they like vision. And that's why their downtown is dying and they're reaching for anything. The person that I was talking to says, why is Carisville doing this? Because they have too broad of a base to start down that avenue. And when they said broad base, what they were talking about was this, the Booth Museum, the Grand, that Saturday morning market, Roseline, the Depot, two historic courthouses, Ross's and the Four Way. Coconuts, there you go, a little endorsement there, coconuts. They got the Coca-Cola sign on Young Brothers, the African-American Heritage Trail is something that was just finished, all right? How does this ordinance benefit any of that? Secondly, all these entertainment districts, if you look at them, they don't have any of that. The reason they have to reach out is because they don't have what we already have. Why would we jeopardize the quality, the bar that we've raised? And there's been a lot of people over twenty-something, I was buying buildings in nineteen ninety-seven for thirty thousand dollars, you know? Nobody wanted downtown, John Lewis, you know, was buying stuff, he's put all this time, so Jackie and Audrey, everything that people have done all these years, you just continue to build on it. There's things that we need to do, more residential, expand the district, you know? Don't focus on this, let's not put our eggs in this basket. Let's go, let's take the downtown development, economic development approach, figure out how to do the right things for downtown, not, not what we're proposing here. I, I'll say this, going back to the Heart and Soul Tour, I was thinking about going, getting off those buses and getting back home. Never once, not once, did anybody ever say, you know, that city needs an entertainment district. The cities that struggle or the cities that this is all they got, that's what they want. We have an incredible resource that we, we don't really give it enough credit. Lake Point, look at how many people in our restaurants, retail shops, coconuts, how many people are coming up from Lake Point? Does this ordinance enhance that experience? Those are mainly families, I don't think so. I have a lot of kids at our house, we, you know, we live right here across from the courthouse. We're near Carisville High School, everybody at Carisville High School lands at our house, at our refrigerator. This summer, it wasn't uncommon for us to have twenty or thirty kids, what do they do? Play basketball in the driveway, ten feet from the edge of the district, go down to coconuts, go down to Jefferson's eat dinner, they're walking this district. I had, I saw a friend of mine from high school at the market, and I'm gonna end it with this. They said that, that their kid was at our house, I didn't realize it. And they, the kid goes to Cass, another kid was from Cass, so the other kid's parents said, I don't know these people in Carisville, who are they? A little concerned about kids, what's going on there? That person says, oh, you don't have to worry, they're, they'll keep an eye on them. I take pride in the fact that we can have kids at our house, we can have kids, I can turn them loose in this downtown district and I don't worry about it. My wife and I, we'll go out and walk at eleven thirty at night, all over this town, I never feel, never once feel concerned about our safety. I'm telling you, we're going down the wrong path. When we start, when this happens, it's gonna change the whole atmos. Period, I'm done. I appreciate you guys, y'all wonderful, you know, um, I know y'all all love Carisville, I know the way y'all, y'all are sitting here this long and listening to all of us is because you care about it. Police do the right thing, I appreciate you guys.
Any mayor, council?
Alan Sanders, forty-one, Whistlestop Drive. So um, for those folks who don't know me, I, I, I've worked downtown, loved downtown, I've lived here for a long, 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 long time. I also serve on the Downtown Development Authority, been on the board for the last almost two years. I guess I'm gonna be here to be the one contrarian from the entire audience that decided to show up because we wanna paint the worst possible picture, the doom and gloom of all of what's been so, said tonight. I felt like I was hearing the preamble to a Mad Max post-apocalyptic world. Broken glass everywhere, trash everywhere, people vomiting and peeing and doing all of this horrible stuff. You know, we have our restaurants now, we have our establishments now. People can get one, two, ten drinks inside now, it's up to that establishment to control what's happening. How many of us have gone downtown to eat and said it's gonna be thirty minutes, forty minutes, but hey, would you like to get a drink? And you say, well, I would, but there's no place for me to move, I can't, I'm, I'm crammed up in here, but I can't go outside ten feet to wait forty minutes for my table, instead I'll go somewhere else. Right? You guys are going to worst-case scenario, you're hearing worst-case, we're not hearing the realistic view of how we conduct ourselves. We don't need to play in the two percent or the five percent or whatever the number that we think could be bad. It's the ninety-five percent of us that understand how to act like adults and be adults, and if you don't feel comfortable taking your glass outside, excuse me, your cup, then you're not and you won't. For those who will, they will. The ordinance, which I know is a starting point, I think it's interesting, broken glass, well, you can't have a glass container to go out of the restaurant. Talk about limits, well, you can't walk out with seventeen drinks in your hand, one, you're taking the one, I think people are conflating the pub crawl and ten participating restaurants versus what we're talking about here tonight. I can't tell you the number of times that my wife and I, not COVID, would say, Saturday, let's go downtown, let's grab a drink over at the Mellow Mushroom? Let's go do a little window shopping, maybe hit another place? We maybe grab some, grab something to eat over at table twenty-one or Appalachian Grill? Go over to uh, the, the Olive Tree and Vine, grab something in there now? We make it an event to just come downtown. We had everybody say earlier when we started this, council members, we've had festival zones. Yeah, you're always gonna have maybe one or two instances you can find, but in the vast majority, the thousands and thousands and thousands of people that have participated in our downtown festivals, we don't have that issue, we don't have. that have participated in our downtown festivals, we don't have that issue, we don't have this problem, we're not New Orleans. We've had the pub crawl for six years, until March, that's an event that we've had. Maybe people didn't downtown, that didn't come to it, don't know anything about it. We've had that. Not everybody's enjoying that kind of an event, they won't sign up and buy a ticket for it. Those who like that kind of an event, they will. It's an option and it's a choice, it's something to create that social atmosphere downtown. We talk about folks that are doing this in other areas. Now, I don't know what towns are suffering or not being managed, but the ones that I know, that I go to, that have this ordinance already in place, Woodstock, Kennesaw, Acworth, Dalton, just in the northwest corner. Everyone maybe do it a little differently, but they have that, they have a vibrant outdoor life when the weather is good. Outdoor music on patios for those restaurants that have that. The ability to not feel crowded while you're waiting to go inside. I think what this ordinance is doing is it allows us in the community to have the option to be able to move about without feeling crammed, without feeling restricted. It does open it up for more just mobility. I don't want to dive into the negatives for everything. People have personal accountability, personal responsibility, there's plenty of laws on the books for people who are drunk and disorderly. Plenty of laws on the books for people who damage public property. Whether you drink inside and go kick out somebody's lights, or come outside with a cup in hand, you're still violating a law. This does not make all that go away, those laws are still in effect. This is just simply a way of opening up downtown, a way of opening it up for the businesses to be able to have maybe more people even come to those restaurants. Because now they're not gonna go home because of a 40-minute wait, they can at least enjoy, have some mobility. So I'm just coming at it from more of a perspective of, as much as I've heard everybody say they love downtown, I do as well. And I know I'm only one voice right now, but I do serve on the DDA. I do think that we try to keep a very good pulse on the businesses in a district that we would eventually map, whatever the eventual map is. And we are very, very focused on making sure that we're doing things to drive both economic development, activity, and bring people downtown, because the more people that come down, they're seeing those shops maybe for the first time, trying the restaurant for that first time. You're giving them the ability to have an enjoyable downtown atmosphere. So from my perspective, I would encourage you to do whatever you have to hammer out, but I would certainly support this moving forward. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening?
Good evening, Council. My name is Jennifer Smith, I live at 11 Noble Street. I own two businesses in the downtown district, one on the border of the downtown district. We do serve alcohol in the downtown district, we participate in the pub crawl in the downtown district. We are responsible in the amount of alcohol that we serve, in who we serve, when we serve, the way that we serve. And we expect our patrons to be responsible adults. We allow them to exercise the responsibility that God has granted them. I truly believe, as a Christian, that there'll be need to say that, since we have been inundated with pastors speaking against alcohol. Alcohol in and of itself is not evil. Jesus served wine, he turned water into wine. You know, we have an opportunity to be responsible adults. We have, as Alan said, we have laws on the books. There's no reason to turn to the absolutes on either side. We've been having pub crawls for six years. We, as a business, did participate because of concerns in the way that they were handled. And then having been a part of it, being in downtown, we saw that they were being held reasonably. The people that participated were reasonable. The ones that weren't, they're not reasonable under any circumstance. People that are gonna overindulge, they're gonna overindulge regardless of what is allowed within our business. They are gonna go to a package store and drink before they go downtown. They're gonna start at home, and they're gonna drink before they go downtown. They're not gonna go into a business and overindulge, and then go to another business and overindulge again. They're gonna go, I mean, typically, you have somebody in a business, and they're gonna have a drink. And then if they can't go outside with a drink, then they're gonna have two drinks, they're gonna have three drinks. They're not gonna leave and go to a next business, have dinner, maybe have a drink, and then continue on with their evening. They're gonna feel the need that they're gonna overindulge because they can't just wander around downtown. They can't have a drink while they're waiting for dinner. I mean, you know, the opportunity to write the rules are ours at this point. It's not an invitation for people to come in and get drunk and be drunk downtown. It's an invitation for people to come into our downtown area and have an enjoyable experience. We've got a beautiful downtown park right here. It would be nice to have a walk outside with a drink that you picked up in a local restaurant, have a seat at the park, and finish your drink. But you can't do that, you've gotta finish your drink before you go outside. What if you don't wanna finish it in 20 minutes? What if you wanted to have it for an hour? But your time limits, you know, you have other things you wanna do, you wanna be able to be outside because it's nice outside. I don't understand why we have to assume that people are going to take everything to the absolute every single time when it's, they're either already doing it now, or they're not going to do it. But we're not making them drink more because we're allowing them to drink outside. Thank you.
Anyone else?
That means Sam Franklin, I live at 14 Riverside Court. We have a family business downtown since 1956. I'm a 48-year-old resident of Cartersville, never lived anywhere else. I have spoken at a previous council meeting, and I did want to express my love of Cartersville, and I don't desire to be anywhere else. I think it's a special place to be, I love the community here. The concerns that I have with something like this, there's a lot of good intentions, there's a lot of responsible people. But I feel like these kind of things encourage people to come that don't care about Cartersville. It would be outside of Cartersville, it would come to use this as a venue to celebrate the weekend, or, you know, get their, you know, party activity on, because we have opened up a venue to participate in things like that. I know that that's not the intentions of the DDA, that's not the intentions of the city council to encourage things like that, but that is what's going to happen. So as a business that falls into an entertainment zone that I have not asked to be a part of, it concerns me with what I may have to deal with as a downtown business in behavior that's associated with alcohol. People can drink responsibly, but, I mean, come on, the common sense. And what we've seen with alcohol is there's a lot of bad behavior that's associated with alcohol. And, you know, I want Cartersville to be somewhere that people want to live, not to come to live for the weekend. I mean, it's just, I think that's promoting things that are going to encourage downtown behavior that nobody is gonna be happy with. And once the genie's out of the bottle, I think, you know, it's difficult to put it back in. So people are going to drink, just like the lady right before me said, people are going to drink. They're going to do that, they're going to break the laws, they're gonna walk around with drinks. I'm sure that happens already without an ordinance, okay? Those things happen, people have Yeti cups, and, you know, who knows what's in them, right? So, but we're going to give permission to do that now by saying, have an open container, and you're not gonna have people that already follow rules very well, okay? So these things are, I just have a lot of concerns of what our downtown will become when we begin to have ordinances that encourage this kind of behavior. And this won't be the, you know, if we pass this ordinance and allow this to go, there'll be another vote that will come before the city council, and it'll push deeper into the very behavior that we're talking about to, you know, allow more of this. So I just feel like this is going in a wrong direction for Cartersville. We're growing in a rate that we see the housing market, you know, you see what houses cost downtown. I mean, it's crazy, people want to be downtown, and we don't have things like this. Why are we not just celebrating what we already are instead of trying to be, add things? You know, I don't, I don't understand. I don't understand what this benefit is. But as a downtown business, I'm like, what am I gonna have to deal with, you know, with people walking around town with alcohol? And my wife is in our store at times, and my daughter is our secretary, and my mother works at our family business. And now I've got to be concerned when I'm not at the store, that there's people downtown that are walking around with alcohol and potentially misbehaving in the safety of our downtown. So, but I appreciate you guys representing us as a community. And I would encourage you to seek the heart of the people that you represent, and that it not be your personal opinion on things like this, but to seek the will of the people in what you're doing. And I know that you'll be faithful to do that because you love Cartersville as well, you wouldn't be serving in this position if you didn't. And I appreciate your time and appreciate your responsibility to make these decisions. Thank you.
My name's Ted Thornborough, I live at 34 West Main Street with my wife that you just heard of, heard a while ago. What I don't think y'all realize is there's a constitutional amendment on the ballot this year that would hold y'all souable for stuff like this. Y'all need to also consider that when you're thinking about passing this ordinance. Is now it's, y'all not gonna be immune, y'all gonna be held responsible. The city will. And I really don't think we need to go down that road. Because I'm a taxpayer, and I don't wanna see my money spent on frivolous lawsuits just because y'all thought it was a good idea to pass something like this. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Y'all know me, I'm Lily Reed, Director of the Downtown Development Authority. So I am not here to share my own opinions, I'm actually here to speak on behalf of the people that I represent with the DDA. I do have a statement that I've been given to read on behalf of one of our business owners. I've also spoken to over 40 of our downtown business owners. That includes retail establishments, that includes restaurants, that includes service businesses. And all of them have, at this point, given me a fairly unanimous yes, that they would support having an entertainment district downtown. Now granted, 40 businesses is not the complete complement of people that we have downtown. There's a lot more to be able to talk to, but I did just want to share that with you, I know that that has come up. So here to read a statement from Justin Owen, he's the owner of Owen Security, and the 101 on Main, the newly renovated building, that looks great, they're on Main Street in Irwin. He says, "As a business owner and investor in downtown Cartersville, it is my firm belief that adopting an entertainment district is an imperative step in the right direction towards driving tourism and growing our vibrant community in a positive and sustainable way. As seen in surrounding communities like Acworth, Kennesaw, Woodstock, and Roswell, open drink districts help facilitate more foot traffic for area businesses while creating a lively atmosphere and strong sense of community. As community leaders, business owners, and small business allies, we should be doing everything we can to promote our local merchants and to fight e-commerce. Making use of the open airspace that we have available in our downtown district is a district benefit to our businesses. Many residents with disposable income travel to surrounding cities during the evenings or weekends because our city does not offer the same flexibility, which results in a considerable profit loss for our merchants. The entertainment district would not result in an influx of intoxicated residents roaming the streets, creating chaos, but rather would allow date night picnic next to the fountain at Founder's Oak with wine from a local tasting room. It would allow consumers to sit on a park bench with a carryout from a local restaurant with a craft beer in hand, watching as the train passes. The ambiance of our city would improve dramatically. The opposition will likely proclaim that an entertainment district will perpetuate alcohol abuse in our downtown. However, those claims are unfounded. This proposal is not an alcohol issue, in fact, alcohol already exists in great quantity downtown. This is more of a personal responsibility issue, and I believe that our residents will act responsibly and follow the laws that are currently in place regarding alcohol consumption and sales. This entertainment district has the potential to act as an economic vehicle, one that attracts more residents, shoppers, diners, and business investors to our community." Again, that's a message from our business owners, and I just was asked to bring that to y'all's attention this evening. Thank you.
My name is Brian Waters, 21 Wood Forest Drive, Cartersville. I didn't plan on speaking this evening, I spoke at the last meeting. But I just wanted to be clear, the downtown area doesn't belong to the businesses that are down there. The downtown area belongs to all of Cartersville. Belongs to me, belongs to the citizens that live out where I live, Ward 5, the different areas. So it's nice that 40 businesses somehow think this would be a very idyllic situation. They're very much in the minority when you consider all of Cartersville. And I think a gentleman earlier made a good point. There's a lot of people that live on the fringe of this proposed entertainment zone, young people, that are gonna be walking through it and transversing it, and are gonna be at the mercy of whatever's going on in there. So I'm not gonna suggest it's gonna be very terrible or not. But I do believe that we have a wonderful situation in Cartersville now. The idea that we have to make this a destination zone for people to come in is ridiculous. This is already a destination zone for families that wanna live here. And that's what we have to guard, that's what we have to maintain. This doesn't do it. This doesn't do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you clarify something on this whole topic, please, sir?
I'll try.
We're talking about a cup, selling a cup, a head of a cup. Not, we're selling a beer and a cup, all right, so we have to know that. Or we're talking about taking beverage products from these businesses, buying them off the shelf, and then consuming it in the public park as well? Because I think that was some of the conversation.
Let me see if I understood your question. Your first question was, we're talking about buying a cup.
Drinking a cup.
Yeah. No, the ordinance does not require them to buy a special cup. The establishment, when somebody would want to leave, has to provide a clear plastic cup to them. The second part was, would they be allowed to drink in parking areas? Is that what you were saying, or a park, I wasn't sure.
Can I buy a bottle of wine, and I don't know who else else would like? Can I buy a bottle of wine, go sit by the fountain, drink that wine in my glass, have they got? That was something that needs to be clarified.
Uh, no, the ordinance does not allow that, as currently drafted. It only deals with open containers.
So we're talking about one alcoholic drinking, leaving. So if somebody's business plan was hanging on, one selling, one beer walking out the door, then there probably gonna be a head of business soon anyway, it sounds like. To me, this is sort of, I don't see the economic, I'm struggling, and that's why I guess, that's why I'm trying to figure out what people are buying off, it creates such the economic drivers of this.
I would suggest, if you wanna talk, you really should come to the podium, there's a microphone, so it does go for everybody to hear. And I can't answer your last one, that was, I think, more of a statement that you were making.
Well, I mean, that's what I'm trying to, it sounds like you leave with a drink in a cup that's provided. So let's take Jefferson's, has sold one more beer that walks out the door. Can I go to a place down the street, and, I mean, she read a letter of somebody with wine, can I buy wine and go sit in the park and drink it? Or does that violate the ordinance?
If you bought a bottle of wine, that would be in violation of the ordinance as currently drafted. If you went into an establishment that sold wine by the glass, and they put you- If you went into an establishment that sold wine by the glass and they put you wine in your, wine in their plastic cup and let you leave with it, you could do that.
So the economic conversation is about the cup, what's in that cup, what they can sell in that one small container walking out the door, if, if I understand it correct?
I'm not gonna make any comment one way on the economics. I will comment on what's actually in the ordinance.
It, but I mean, that's the exchange of dollars is our cup. I mean, our last drink, it sounds like. Does anybody know the answer?
We don't have an ordinance right now. What we're talking about are just potential ideas.
As proposed, though.
Right, so think of this right now as a empty bucket. Everybody's tossed an ideas and what they think about what this empty bucket, how it should be filled. So essentially, if the ordinance was a filled bucket, there is no ordinance. So on, on that, on this kind of question perspective, we can't really answer you right now because we don't really know what would happen.
Cause I think that's something that I think people are trying to understand.
And I'll, I'll, I'll answer the question from my perspective. And again, it's one of the questions I have regarding the, the ordinance in and of itself. Cause again, I, I ask myself the same question. What is the economic benefit to the store owners if this goes into effect? Is it gonna increase sales of every restaurant by ten, twenty? Is it gonna, is it gonna encourage retail shops to be open later so that they will do more business? Is it going to, wha, what is that? I think that's kinda the question that you're asking.
I, I think so because...
And the other question, I'm not a restaurateur, but if I did own a restaurant, I would think I would want somebody to come in, purchase a drink, and have to, and have to stay with that drink because hopefully they're gonna order an appetizer, they might order a second drink, or they, as opposed to going in and leaving somewhere else to buy.
Well, the conversation I have with a business owner that owns a restaurant was, was sort of that concept. He wants to sell on the first drink when they sit down. He wants to sell on the last drink, but he wants them to stay, not necessarily be transient.
So I wasn't really answering your question. I was just kinda, I think we have a similar perspective, but a restaurateur, somebody that, that is in that business could an, is the only ones that could answer.
In a retail business really, unless, unless there may be sampling, a sampling place, I, I don't know about full operation. I mean, most retail doesn't allow food or, or drink in periods, so they're probably gonna, I'm just trying to figure out, I mean, we, we talk economics. I'm just trying to figure out again where that's at. I do agree with something that Alan said. I, I do think there is a space issue, you know, and I think that's where, it goes by that Table twenty-one conversation. I think you need to take some of these issues and go specifically straight to that particular situation. If they need a variance or, or something, at least hear it out individually, I don't think we should probably throw those in. Secondly, I think when you start looking for expansion to downtown, that's a conversation that I think that you can create new districts that allow more outdoor seating, probably even create a restaurant district. There's, this is a common approach through the economic driver of the Downtown Development Authority approach. I think that's a conversation that needs to be had. If you wanna make it successful, maybe look at that. Maybe that solves some of the problems of having to be mobile with alcohol. But I think, I think we got a lot of, you know, and everybody's, you know, everybody's open their opinion, whatever. But I just think there's some other steps to take to make it successful. I think you have a great district if you just put the minds and the visions at work. Maybe this is not what we need to do and I'm done. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Bye.
Anyone else?
I'd like to say something else. You know, if a seven forty-seven crashed today, it'd be tragic, wouldn't it? Be all over TV. There's four hundred and sixteen souls on a seven forty-seven. But you know, alcohol deaths are equivalent to, I split seven forty-seven hitting the ground every day. I told you I was in the ministry. We deal with these guys all the time. You wanna see open container work, go to fourteen Current Street. That's where I live. Fourth street in this city. You want open containers? Go check out what's going on down there. It's twenty-four hours a day, open containers, drugs, prostitution. I see it all. That's what's gonna come downtown. Cleanups, cleanups sits fourteen Current Street. Police wanted to come down the road.
I, I'll respectfully disagree with that last statement.
Well, they hardly ever come down. They let you call and then they go to the wrong address. Be honest with you. I live down there.
I, I understand, but I'm not gonna let you stand up here and tell me that our police aren't gonna do their job. When the police, they will show up.
Nothing's happened. I see them hauling off and the police, and the guys getting back before the police can get back. This goes on every day. It's seven days a week, twenty-four hours. I live right in the middle of it. Open container. They walk down the road with drinks, smoking cigarettes and their drugs and all this kinda stuff. Already, I walked, I start walking.
Our, our conversation is relative to the entertainment district downtown. You had an opportunity to speak. If you wanna speak specifically to that, that's fine. If you got an issue with Current Street or the police, you can reach out to me personally.
Okay, well, here's the second part in there. I get up at four o'clock every morning. I walk the city, this city every single morning. You know, you got somebody living right there at the depot on the concrete there. I see alcoholics all over. They come to my building all the time trying to get money from us. I deal with these guys. Y'all ain't dealing with them. You hear me?
What does this have to do with the entertainment?
Cause that's what you're doing. You sow alcohol, you're reeking drunks. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
If, if I can, do we, does, do we have any governance of businesses that would come downtown that would be encouraged by having a entertainment zone, you know, or entertainment district? If there was businesses that that would attract because of being able to have, walk around alcohol, do we have any oversight for businesses that would be encouraged to come downtown because of an entertainment zone? Is that, you understand what I'm asking?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, unless a restaurant felt that, again, that it made it a more attractive opportunity. I'm trying to answer your question.
New businesses to come to town, you know, if a building was available.
Right, but if, and again, I can't, I'm gonna give you an unqualified answer just to try to give you an answer, but the truth of the matter is if there's, if, for instance, if there was a restaurant that felt that they would like to locate it in an entertainment district versus an area that didn't have an entertainment district, that, and I'm not saying that that's true or accurate, but I'm saying I'm giving you a scenario because you asked, as opposed to just looking at you.
Yeah, yeah. Not, not necessarily a, a risk or a...
What you're asking about is are there additional regulations or governance related to any type of establishment coming in with them being an inner zone? Not as currently proposed and that's not something that has been talked about yet by council in this ordinance. It's something that can be talked about and discussed as they go through this process if they continue to do so. Thank you.
Keith, can I ask you a question, please?
You may.
So when the city decided to allow alcohol to be served in restaurants, that was before your time of war, huh?
Yes, that was in, I believe eighty-six, if my memory's correct.
And I'm not condoning one way or another. I'm taking all information in here. Put that out there. But when the city decided as a whole, that was a vote, correct?
Yes.
And the city of Cartersville's residents, taxpayers decided that alcohol in their restaurants would be a good thing and would overredundate. I didn't vote in my city that month, but I'm not now. Since we have had alcohol in our restaurants downtown and the city flagged, as long as you've been city attorney, have you seen that be a negative on our city? Because as a business owner at one point downtown, downtown, for many years, I didn't see it as a negative. I didn't serve alcohol as my, as my, others did, but I didn't find it a negative thing. I found more people coming downtown to eat, not going to town anymore, not going back earlier anymore because we have the availability of nicer restaurants. Nicer restaurants typically will serve less wine every year. So what I'm trying to weigh out here in all the conversation is, where do we really have to put our focus on to get this right as we did when our community decided to serve beer in our restaurants and our fablems? Nobody here wants it to go wrong. Nobody does. So that's what I'm saying. Did you see, cause you've been here a lot longer than most of us have, in your position, did you see that as a negative?
Um, no, what I will say is from my understanding, one of the big driving pushes when alcohol sales were approved by the drink in Cartersville, when it was approved, which I've heard from my partner, who has been here since the beginning of time, was that we were trying to attract more national brand restaurants, you know, the Applebee's, the Red Lobster. We were trying to get these types of places to come to our community, Longhorns. And it did do that. I mean, they came because of that and they would not have come without alcohol sales. I will say the one thing that I have noticed, and we're speaking of downtown, the downtown restaurants that all serve alcohol and do very well are all local. They're all local owned. We didn't get any national brands come in downtown where the national brands located were surrounding downtown on the, on the major streets coming in next to the shopping centers. I mean, they have their marketing studies. They know exactly where they're going and to attract the type of customers where they want and that's where they locate. Since we've had it, none of them have located downtown. We don't meet whatever their site criteria are for them to locate there. The restaurants that have located downtown and most, I think most of them have served alcohol. From the alcohol sales reports I've seen over the years, you know, it ranges from where alcohol sales are five to fifteen percent of a restaurant like Appalachian Grill to like some of the other places that were downtown where it's close to almost half their business. So for several other places downtown, alcohol is, they wouldn't be able to survive without it. Other types of establishments, they can survive fine. If that, I can't really give you a definitive answer to your question, but that's just sort of what I've observed over the years.
Thank you.
But, but it would be fair to say though, too, we have different businesses, not just restaurants serving downtown.
Oh, yeah.
Like in the past, we had, you just had restaurants serving alcohol. Now we have different business models, whether it's breweries or, or specialty shops or, and cigar bars, what have you. Now that's kinda changed the landscape, not necessarily the restaurant factor.
Anyone else?
Very good. We will work on this for the next few weeks and then crank it up again November the fifth?
Yeah.
Very good. Are there any other businesses that need to come for council this evening? If not, Chairlaine Tatum motion.
No, no.
Stay gold.